......
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
All right, Student Board Representative, Sam Cook.
Here.
Arabella Stanley.
Here.
Alex Stiltner.
Here.
Mr. Helverson.
Here.
Mrs. Reisner.
Here.
Mrs. Waterson is absent. Mrs. Alford is present. Mrs. Wallace, here. Mr. Smith is absent. Mr. Bass?
I am present.
We do have a quorum.
All right, thank you for that. Mr. Ridgeway, we do not have any modifications to the agenda, correct?
We do not.
All right. Start with Communications and President's remarks. Good evening to all here tonight and those viewing online. The Board of Education of Harper Creek Community Schools would like to recognize the 2025 staff retirees for all their work in positively impacting the lives of children throughout their careers. I have a list that I'm going to read of twenty individuals that have done great work here at Harper Creek. Carrie Knight, High School Consumer Science. Mike Rio, High School Technology. Mark Lowry, High School Science. Nancy Eckert, High School Special Education. Deb Hall, High School Art. Dar Smith, High School Special Education. Chris Gilbert, Sonoma Elementary Reading Coach. Michelle Migliaccio, Beetle Lake Elementary Developmental Kindergarten. Julie Robinson, Beetle Lake Elementary, Third Grade. Sharon Waltman, Beetle Lake Elementary, Fourth Grade. Joanne Juice Burns, Waddles Park Elementary, Third Grade. Diana Bartholomew, Waddles Park Elementary, Fourth Grade. Jim Eckert, Waddles Park Elementary, Fourth Grade. Melissa Barnes, Middle School Secretary. Kim Maury, Middle School Paraprofessional. Sharon Bailey, Sonoma Elementary Interventionalist. Cheryl Koenig, Sonoma Elementary Interventionalist. Jenny Henrich, Sonoma Elementary Interventionalist. Michelle Morgan, Payroll Specialist. And last but not least, High School Principal Ed Greenman. I'd like to thank all twenty of them for their years of service. We wouldn't be the district, we are without you guys. So, thank you very much. With that, I will turn it over to Administration and Mr. Ridgeway.
Okay, I got a few things. A lot of it is sort of dates and times, but I do want to remark, we've been doing the AP, Advanced Placement Testing, in this room over the last week plus this week. And I'm really impressed with the number of kids that are, or students, that are taking the AP classes. It's a huge increase from previous. We saw that, I think, at our last meeting with the presentation, but AP courses are typically very, very challenging. And they also are very good for student applications for college. So, I just wanted to mention that. Some big things this week is seniors last week. The last day is the fifteenth, which is Thursday. They do a walk and a slideshow. The walk starts approximately ten forty-five. It's open to the public. So, we do have parents that come in. Basically, all of our student body goes out of their classrooms. The seniors walk the hallways of the high school for the last time. Just flop 'em out. Lot of hugs and tears. And sometimes we even have our retirees leading the way. So, with that group of retirees, it might be a really big group this year. And then Senior Awards on Friday. You're welcome to come if you'd like. There isn't necessarily a role for our board members, but you can come if you'd like. They have breakfast first at seven thirty and then awards at eight. Girls on the Run is Saturday at May seventeenth at the stadium. We're hosting again. We have our Building Committee coming up next week on May nineteenth. I'm really excited about the progress that's happening with our potential bond project in the future. They're doing a facilities assessment now. This whole board will see the facilities assessment. We kind of did a timeline out. Probably end of July or early August is when the board will see the results of that assessment. Board Tour. Make sure you have your calendars. May twenty-third at nine. I'm calling this the behind-the-scenes tour. We will still see some classrooms, but I think looking at some areas that you don't typically see, you know, when you walk into the school building. Middle School Awards, if you have middle school kids. May twenty-seventh is sixth and fifth grade, and May twenty-eighth is seventh and eighth. Eighth is doing what they call a celebration. They're not calling it graduation, but it's a graduation-like assembly. It's been a request by parents for many years. So, they are going to try to have this celebration for the eighth graders this year to see how that goes. Distinguished alumnus and distinguished citizens is May thirtieth at three. And then graduation, ask all board members to come. Arrive by five forty-five at the stadium. If it's inclement weather, it'll be at the high school, either in the auditorium or in the gym. I kind of let the high school figure that part out. But five forty-five either way on the thirtieth. And then we did receive how much money we got from the pilts or the casino money. The final total was two million, two hundred ninety-three thousand. It was about thirty-one thousand higher than my initial estimate. So, you know, I feel pretty good about that. It's always thankful to get that money from the local revenue sharing board and the Fire Keepers Hotel and Casino. So, thank you. And then on top of that, it helps us finish our budget up. I think that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Madam Secretary, any communications?
We have several. We have several donations to acknowledge. Grace Health, Ashley Roberts, five hundred dollars for Beetle Lake staff appreciation. Benjamin Lincoln, twenty-five thousand dollars for Harper Creek Basketball. Brad and Lynn Wilson, three thousand nine hundred and sixty-seven dollars and fifty-five cents for Harper Creek Champion Project. Dave Ponczek, two thousand eight hundred and sixty-one dollars and fifty-five cents for Harper Creek Champion Project. King Scott, Rob Atkins, a thousand dollars towards Harper Creek Champion Project. Eddie Stanton with Stanton Interiors, five thousand dollars for Harper Creek Champion Project. Tim and Sloan Hudson, seven hundred and fifty dollars for the Harper Creek Champion Project. And Brandon Hudson, two hundred and fifty dollars towards the Harper Creek Champion Project. We accept those donations with thanks.
Awesome. Thank you for those donations to those folks. Means a lot to Harper Creek and our community. Move on to District Updates, Curriculum. Mrs. Williams, good evening.
Good evening, everyone. Just a couple of quick highlights. I'm going to start moving any board approval items, just typically coursework, or in this case, course catalogs to the top so that we're not hunting for them. And so I don't forget to get on the agenda. As far as the season right now, it is testing season, which it was also in April. So, we have our NWA and our state M-Step. And so I broke down kind of what our young people are experiencing. A lot of heavy testing everywhere, but especially in our middle school because no grade goes untested over there. So, I just am really proud of the staff and the building coordinators. A lot of good things are happening in intentionality around the testing. We continue with our high-quality Tier One. We're getting closer and closer to having those scoping sequences right embedded in the coursebook, which I'm sure you saw as you reviewed the coursebook. We're not at a hundred percent, but we're closer. And then continuing training right up until the end, although we'll probably do a lot less in May because we're competing with testing and just hire teachers. So, I think that's it. Kindergarten Roundup, that's the final. That also went very well, very smooth. We've got it into a situation where the kids go to the buildings the first two months. And then at the end, we round it off and they actually test here by building. And they do a theme. And so Michelle Burkhardt and Admin Assistance and Kaylee and all them have been a lot of work for that.
Looks like a camping theme to me.
We had a camping theme, "Fire Up for Harper Creek." And they did all that. So, yeah. Unless you have any questions, as you reviewed the coursebooks, you'll see that we are requesting that they get approved tonight. We were hoping to have the Michigan Virtual. We made a request in March, but we found out this weekend that they're not going to be available, well, actually last week, wouldn't be available till July. But then I got an email on Sunday, "We can have them through you early next week." So, and again, Michigan Virtual Coursebook, that's just a safety net in case there's a course that is not offered, you know, through the ed options. So, we're streamlining. We had a hodgepodge of virtual options. I say hodgepodge, but that's what we had to do. And so now we're streamlining to Edmentum, Edoptions. So, Calvert is the K-five and then Edoptions is six twelve. Any questions from those pieces? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Move on to Facilities and Mr. Robinson.
Good evening. Yes, I submitted a report. Is there any questions on that? I had a lot of stuff in there today, this week. So, a couple of highlights. We are, we'll talk later about the weight room, the champions, that's the champions program, in case anybody was wondering. But we're full speed ahead now with graduation planning and then summer work planning. So, graduation, we met today. If we do have inclement weather, we'll be in the gym.
You mean which one?
In the gym.
In the gym, okay.
Yep, just because the amount, looking at about two hundred kids possibly.
Okay.
Well, they're going to go with, if we have to move it inside, I think six tickets per family type thing.
And we've only done the gym one time in the last ten, eleven years?
Actually, the first time, we actually brought it home.
Oh, from, yeah.
The first year we came back from WK.
And that was?
It was in the gym.
Was that, would be two thousand fifteen then?
Guess, something like that.
And that was not.
It was not fun. And we decided about ten o'clock or eleven o'clock that morning to move it inside. We won't do that again.
Hopefully.
And we're working diligently on, like I said, summer projects, spring sports, as everybody knows, being crazy this year. And then working with food service on some of their spend-out projects. So, we're hoping to get those in place.
Yeah, there's a little bit of news on the rental house. So, we do not have a renter at this point. And so we will talk about that to the Building Committee to see what we want to do with that house property.
No comment.
No comment?
No, no comment. Anything further for Mr. Robinson?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. I'll move on to Finance and Mrs. Obermeyer.
Good evening. My normal board reports. This one's going to be short and sweet because you're going to hear a lot from me later in the meeting about budget and things. But the normal, it shows the revision from back from February and then the percentages. Next month, I'll be bringing a new budget so that it'll be more in line with the percentages. But things are looking, looking good, on track or better. Then the next one is a cash balance report. The only real change there is we made our school bond loan fund for the debt, which is about four point five million. So, you'll see in debt that that went down significantly, but that's paying back that.
We have twelve dollars.
Yeah.
There it stays now.
Because I want it all, make it as much interest as possible in the.
So, where's that, where do we see the interest? Okay, they're at the bottom?
Yeah.
So, so far, two hundred ninety-two thousand this year?
For the year, yep.
Pretty good.
That is just phenomenal. It's free money falling out the trees for us.
That's why there's one dollar in the money market because it's all in the MyLapp right now. But that's really all I have for this. Of course, during the Finance Committee meeting, we went over all the checks and everything else. But if you have any questions?
Yeah, if you, you know, as board members, if you ever wanted to look at the check registry, it's here. In the board book, every month, you can see every check that was written by Harper Creek. So, it's always something that sometimes people ask that question from the audience or from the community. You know, we have our checkbook open to anybody that'd like to take a look at it.
And the Finance Committee gets a detailed one, so even the descriptions of things. And you can ask any questions.
All right, if nothing further from Mrs. Obermeyer, move on to Technology and Mr. Maynard.
All right. I got the usual updates, but I do want to focus on the student device purchase aspect because that is an action item tonight. At the Building Committee previously, we were allocated two hundred thousand dollars to spend on technology purchases out of that casino fund. And the spreadsheet you see is the desired way to break that down. The first three items are actually already purchased. That's why they have exact dollar amounts. The remainders are estimates. Basically, we would have needed two hundred and fifty to continue the one-to-one program as we had been doing it, which is first, fifth, and ninth grade replacements every year. To make this work, we decided not to replace the first grade this year because they're generally in good condition. So, we're going to take the fourth grade devices coming out, put them back on the carts for another year, and carry on that way. We're also moving the middle school by buying a few extra carts. We can use the existing seventh and eighth grade computers to move the middle school fully back onto carts, which is a long-term goal of ours. And the middle school is definitely on board with that. And that causes breakage to drop quite a bit. So, most of the purchases are related to the Chromebooks and the carts and the licenses and the bags that go in and all of the doodads to go with that. And some other odds and ends, we wanted to buy more staff computers, the laptops that all the teachers have. We give those to Paris. We give those to administrators, give them to everybody. So, we need more of those. Projectors, we have a long, long list of projectors needing replacement. And some AV items, including wireless microphones that we can use in the auditorium, but they would be portable so we can go back and forth. And AV system in the bandroom at the high school, been working on. And that's kind of the gist of it. I guess, is there any questions?
Middle schools, so they, the students will not be able to take their?
Correct.
Computers home anymore?
Yeah, we've been moving towards that. So, right now, sixth and seventh, fifth and sixth grade are already on that model. Seventh major's still taking them home. We find the damage is extensive when they take them home, and it drops significantly when they don't. And the teachers are happier. We're happier. It seems to be a win-win. With the, we had to buy a few more carts. And you have to buy a few extra computers that way because instead of buying one for every kid, you're buying thirty for every classroom. And so it works out to more, and thirty-two in some cases, it turns out, so.
As long as the administration and teachers are good, I'm good.
I had told Jim to just put behind me the spreadsheet so you can see everything that's going to be purchased because he's got to act fairly quickly. For example, the seventh grade Chromebooks, if we wouldn't have bought them at that time, first of all, we may not have gotten them. But second of all, it would have cost, I think, we said, five thousand more approximately for the same computer. So, we did act with that in advance. Within our board policy, it does have an emergency situation. So, I did approve that for that. But I want the board to approve it now, even though it's in the rear, just so that we have it on the books. And now Jim can move forward with the other purchases as necessary. He's very frugal.
Thank you, Jim and Jim, for being frugal. All right, if nothing further there, we'll move on to comments related to agenda items. Everybody's good, all right. Consent Agenda. Madam Secretary.
Your calls for a motion that the Harper Creek Board of Education approve the consent agenda as follows. Approve the general fund checks, school services, fund checks, school lunch, and school, student in-school activity fund checks in accordance with the list discussed. And approve the following minutes as reviewed, May eighth, twenty twenty-five, budget meeting minutes.
So, moved.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Do we have discussion? Hearing and seen none, please call the roll.
Mr. Helverson?
Yes.
Mrs. Reisner?
Yes.
Mrs. Wallace?
Yes.
Mrs. Alford, I vote yes. Mr. Bass?
I vote yes.
Motion passes.
All right, five zero. Move on to Information Discussion, Safety Committee Update. Mr. Ridgeway?
You'll be happy to hear this is different than every other meeting. So, we went to Waddles Park Elementary with the purpose of looking at the pickup and drop-off. We ended up having three board members because we, well, Bo's on the Safety Committee, and then Aaron and Ashley are both parents currently at Waddles and wanted to hear. And so we are, we created a plan for the back parking lot. That would be the second, third, and fourth grade pickup and drop-off that we will implement. The front parking lot at this point, we won't change except for the fact we're going to have staff park in the back parking lot. That'll open that entire front parking lot up for parents when they come in to get their first graders and kindergartners. We also talked about, now, I call it secure mode because that is what we're moving towards in our emergency operation plan. So, we had a secure mode situation that occurred at Waddles Park Elementary last Thursday. There was a suspicious individual. Somebody thought that there was a weapon involved. Kids on our bus actually saw it. We called it in, called nine-one-one. They called the police, which was Justin, our resource officer. Kids went into secure mode, which is, we get the kids inside, all inside, lock the doors. Nobody can enter or leave the building during that time. And it was very quickly resolved by Officer King and some supporters at Emmett Township. And so that was great. And then what we did is we just went back through and said, what was good? What can we improve on? And so we really think it's important to do that kind of work. Talked a little bit about some of the events coming up, that we need support from Emmett Township, which graduation and Girls on the Run, they'll have support there from our officers. And then we talked a little bit about school buses and incidences on school buses and how that communication is going. Because there's a little bit, that's not a discrepancy, but we have a bus director that can do discipline, and we have principals that can do discipline. And we just talked about that. They all had met, the principals and the bus director. But the Safety Committee was just curious of how that all went because sometimes we have issues on buses, and we want to make sure that those are taken care of. That was Safety Committee. And we plan on going to other schools as we meet over the next few months so that we can hear what the issues are specifically at their school, which we think is going to be a really nice project.
All right, thank you for that. Biennial CISD Board of Education election, which we did meet on before this meeting. Is there any discussion there? Anything further before we take our vote a little later on? All right, hearing and seen none. Move on to the Budget Update.
Okay, I'm going to pass it over to Mrs. Obermeyer. Do you want to put these up on the screen?
Yeah.
Okay. Make it big so we can see it. Hold on.
I'm going to be bringing the actual final budget at the end of June, but it's been heavy on our minds and moving forward. So, we're, I was in a good place to bring some, an update to you guys. This isn't final, but there were, in February, when I brought the board, we kind of went into a spending freeze. Obviously, if someone needed something, they could, but they'd just be more, I don't know, spending freeze. And transportation and facilities specifically, the big has done a great job of that, and it really had a large impact on the budget. When I do a budget, it's based on trends, and the trends were skyrocketing, and so that helped a lot. This also reflects a better estimate in retirement percentages. Again, we get revenue quarterly. I still haven't gotten May or August revenue, but I got a better feel for the second quarter, and I was able to include that. Additionally, there was two state aid payments that I did not have in the revenue that I brought to you in February because I didn't know about them. The first one was enrollment stabilization. So, if you lose students, right, it's new the last two years. If you lose students, they try to stabilize you. We hadn't had that in previous years, and we actually were given it originally, and then it was taken away. But then in February after, of course, I brought you the revenue, and it was put back in for two hundred and twenty thousand. So, that helped the budget's bottom line. And also in February, a prior year adjustment in state special ed payment for two hundred and thirty thousand. So, that right there was a four hundred and fifty thousand in revenue that I did not know about in February. So, again, I'm not going to have the final, but it's definitely looking better than the one point nine in the negative that I, that I brought you in February. Is there any questions?
Any questions on this year's budget? So, we're a lot better spot than we were in February, one point nine million.
This would put us at, if this were ended, twelve point seven percent on balance.
And there was, when we met, Sarah and I met with you at the Budget Committee, there were some variables there. I think two or three of them, those look pretty, still look pretty solid on the extra income side of things?
Yes, yep. The two hundred and twenty and the two hundred and thirty thousand, yes.
Okay.
Okay, and then into next year's budget, which we've been talking about for, since February, kind of early, but I'll put it right there. You think you see it, okay?
So, full transparency, this is less conservative than I normally would be at a first go at it because there's a lot of assumptions. But I wanted to lay out all the assumptions. The foundation allowance of ten thousand dollars, which the House, the Senate, and the governor's budget all reflected at least ten thousand dollars. A couple of them, I think one or two was ten thousand and eight dollars. So, we'll take those eight dollars. But I built it on ten thousand dollars. Student count, this year, we put, we did two thousand seven hundred and ten FTE. We usually, in years past, have built it on the spring count. This year's spring count was two thousand seven hundred and thirteen. And last year, as you know, it went down pretty significant from the spring. So, we assumed a little bit of a loss. And I left the retirement revenue and expenses the same because there are a lot of changes going on. But when I, when I dug in deep and did the revenue versus, it's about a hundred thousand dollars for the better, but it wasn't a guarantee. So, I, so I left everything the same. Insurance, I estimated an eight point five percent increase. Current legislation is a, there's a hard cap, and that was actually released at two point nine percent increase. So, if it stays like that, then it'll be better for our budget by a hundred and fifty thousand. But there's also bills out there being talked about being passed that could increase it by ten percent. So, I left it at eight percent, and I, and I feel good about that eight percent increase. But again, current legislation, the hard cap was just released, and it's two point nine percent increase. I did leave the at-risk and transportation grant the same. Normally, when I'm building this kind of budget, I would not include that transportation grant because it is a newer grant. Just last year, it was three hundred and thirty thousand. I kept it in there because it is in all the budgets, the Senate, the House, and the governors. But that would be an easy one to go away, I think, because it is just, it's supposed to be a one-time thing. Now it's a two-time thing.
So, that could put us well back over a million very quickly.
Right, so that would be three hundred and thirty thousand. But again, it is in all of the budgets. Another new thing that I have in there is, from the ISD, we know that we get reimbursed our special ed costs. We, as a district and we as a county, have asked them to reimburse us an indirect rate of ten point four, four-four percent. The ten point four-four percent is Harper Creek specific, and it is for this year. That's our percentage this year. I don't know what it is next year. I'm hoping that I get to release before I bring you a budget in June, but the only thing I had to go off of was this year. So, I went with the ten point four-four percent, which is, would increase our revenue by two hundred and sixty thousand. And that's all built into this budget that I was going to bring you. The adjustments would be, I know last week we brought some adjustments. This month, it would be decreasing nine positions, but by attrition. So, people who are leaving, not rehiring for those positions, or there's.
I'll just talk through them. We've not talked out loud about what these positions are to, you know, just in public. But basically, we have, or we are proposing reducing three positions in the high school, and we have gone through the scheduling process to make that happen. One family, a consumer science teacher, one technology teacher, and then one art teacher. One family consumer science teacher, one technology teacher, and then, and one art teacher. Two elementary education teachers, and that was because of numbers in classrooms. We're, we're fairly low in kindergarten right now. At Sonoma, in first grade at Sonoma, so going from three to two. And again, through attrition, these aren't layoffs or anything like that, but we have staff leaving and just not replacing. And then four general-funded paraprofessionals. So typically, what might happen is, we have an issue maybe in a classroom about behavior. And I add, I say I, because I add a person in to help. That's a general-funded paraprofessional, not a special education paraprofessional, to help with that behavior. And so at the end of the year, we don't, we don't put those positions back in. We always take them back out. And we have lots of parapositions, so again, those folks that are in those positions will go to the open parapositions that we have through this attrition process. And then one reduction in the high school. We have two general ed pairs there. We're going to reduce that by one. So those are the nine positions that when I say that, that's what I mean. No layoff notices, but maybe some changes of job duties for some in the paraposition.
And then I did decrease the transportation supplies, technology supplies, and maintenance supplies by five percent, which would, would project, the projected with all these assumptions would put us at a negative seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand. Now, a couple of things to just, the, the biggest adjustment would be the student count. Right now, the kindergarten numbers are looking better than they were last year.
Yeah, we had ten more kids that were tested this year in our testing for kindergarten, so that's a good sign, for sure. I'm hopeful that we'll have, you know, a, a strong kindergarten class because you need to be strong at the bottom to, you know, continue to grow as a district at the top. We always talk about, not always, but a lot of times we talk about cuts to revenue, or sorry, to expenses versus adding revenue in. Adding revenue is another spot. And so making sure that we maximize what we do with our classrooms. And I guess I'll just leave it at this. You know, Ginger, I think, did a pretty good job explaining it. We started at two-point-five million as, in our first swath, if you remember. And so we've made these adjustments. We've gotten it to seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand. We are curious if that is where the board is comfortable with, going into a budget for next year, because then Ginger will build that budget, and we'll have our budget hearing the fourth Friday in, in June. If not, then we will go back and, and come back with further reductions.
Which would mean if we wanted to get lower than seven-fifty to, let's say, five-hundred, we might have to start looking at.
It would probably, it would, not probably, it would be layoffs, yes, at this point.
My thought is, is, you know, having been on the board now for ten and a half years, that we've seen a start in a similar position and make it back to the green throughout the rest of the year. Obviously, there's a lot of unknowns in the budget. And so I'm personally pretty comfortable with this number to start with, and I like the fact that administration has done a great job cutting positions through attrition and not through anybody actually losing a job at this point.
If anything comes up, we will keep you informed if we need to go deeper. We have, we still have six weeks at least, right, until that date? So we got a long time if something does change.
All right, move on to new hires.
Just one new hire to bring to the board, Lori Cathcart, Beetle Lake Elementary Development of Kindergarten. She would come in in M A twenty, which is high on our scale. I was happy to hear that we have a couple of applicants this week, I think three as a matter of fact, that would have, would be more towards the other side of the scale. Because that is helpful also as we think about budgets, but Lori was awesome. She comes with almost thirty years of experience as a kindergarten teacher and great recommendations, so. Be a great hire. Development of kindergarten, we really need solid people because it has to start for, for the kids that are maybe needing the most supports.
All right, let's move on to course books.
Yeah, last meeting, we heard about course books for elementary, high school, and our online courses. I'm recommending the board approves all the course books that Mrs. Williams has brought forward, including elementary, middle, high school, and Edumentum. Not the Michigan Virtual, though. We're not ready to approve Michigan Virtual, so just those four. Elementary, middle, high, and Edumentum.
Any comment for Bemers?
It's an annual thing that we have to do.
All right, let's move on to food service contract.
All right, so we have to annually renew the food service contract. We're in year two of a five-year contract. I have no reason to not move forward. I think it's, I think they're doing a nice job, and I also think that the process by which the state approves this and then we approve it, there's really no reason for us not, not to move forward.
Chef Rumenapp is a gem. I think we're lucky to have him here at Harper Creek, and I wouldn't want to see that change. Move on to the weight room project.
All right, I was just giving this before I walked in, so I'm going to move it over. Just give me a second. So here is some, I don't know, it's fun to look at the pictures, right? So what, the weight room type stuff, bench pad logo, so that's the logo that we will use. There's some other logos that we'll use. As I get down further, here's what the weights will look like. So each weight will have Harper Creek Beavers, and that's with the logo and the, the weights on it. This is what a, the weight stands will look like, because we're going to ask you to approve, approve some of these tonight. Another angle of that, and it gives you a flavor of what, what we're getting. These stations do several different lifts, you know, bench, incline, decline, squat, if you're familiar with all those things. Clean jerk, all, all the stuff that they do in the weight room. If you walked into a college weight room, these are the kinds of things that you would see, just so you know. This, this, this piece of equipment as well. There's the dumbbells, and then you have the lat pulldown and, what's the other one called? Lat and?
Tricep extension.
Try, try. I haven't been to the weight room in a while. I don't know. Sorry. All right, and here's what, it looks like top-down view, so there is weight equipment. You can see the flooring. The green is actually turf, like the turf on the field, and then the gray is the rubberized floor. Jim tells me it's a little bit more of a black than a gray.
So under each of, so the floor itself would be a black, and under each piece of equipment, you will see basically the logo that you saw at the beginning. Under every piece of equipment, that would be the drop zones, it's a little heavier, a lot of rubber in there, because you can no longer have, those of you that have been in our weight rooms, you can no longer have the raised platforms anymore because of certain issues.
And one more thing that I think some board members, so this used to be half. The weight room was cut right here where there's a wall right here, and this half was the weight room. This half was the wrestling room. So we've taken this wall out. That's already happened, and so now the entire space. So that's why we can have more equipment in, in the weight room. So just gives you a flavor of what the weight room is going to look like when we get the equipment that we're asking you to approve tonight. We have room for more weight equipment, and so as, as more potential money comes in, we will continue to buy more weight equipment. But this will get us in a pretty, pretty good position.
How many people can use that equipment at one time right now?
Well, depends on how, they're usually done at stations, and I'm going to talk, I'm going to talk off, off a little bit. I think that you can have four kids at a station, so you have about sixty-six kids in there in total at one time. Now, some people would say that might be unsafe with one person, so you might think about having two people in the room doing that many because it's a fairly big room. But you could theoretically, if you had a team, you know, one of our bigger teams, you could pretty much get the entire team at once, which is good.
Jim, is, are the Smith machines, are they Smith machines, or do those bars come off so they can do free, like a free bench press, or are they on a, on a?
No, they're all free.
They're all free?
The rack systems you're talking about?
The rack systems.
Yeah, those are all free. No, those are not a rack.
Okay.
So that's what we're looking at, and then I'll talk about, a little bit about the money. So so far, this was as of Friday, they, we, we have raised a hundred-and-fifty-four thousand, and thank you to anybody who has donated. We really appreciate it. And so that allows us to do the flooring. The low bidder was Sornecks at seventy-one thousand, three-hundred-and-seventy-eight dollars and sixteen cents. And then we could purchase weight room, the weight room equipment that you see, direct from Fitness Solutions for seventy-seven thousand, seven-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars. As more money comes in, we will get more weight equipment to finish it off, and then the last piece is just to dress it up with things on the walls and things like that. So, but it's about a twelve-week or eight-week to get the weight equipment. Do you remember? Yeah, we, what we don't want to do is do the floor, take all the equipment that we have, do the floor, put our old stuff back in, take the old stuff back out, put the new stuff back in. We're trying to time it to take it out, put the floor in, put the new stuff in, and move forward.
How about the extra space in there? What, is that going to be filled in with some of the old equipment?
The green right here?
No, well, just in between, like the gray.
That's going to be to build out in the future. They'll have some loose equipment like pile boxes and that type of stuff through there. But that's actually going to ultimately probably be the rack system as well. The original rendering adds the, the racks on the sides and then racks, racks to all three of the middle as well.
All right, anything further there? All right, move on to item H, bus purchase.
Okay, so Transportation Director Stacy Henan is recommending we purchase a lift bus. So we have to have a lift bus for our special needs population. Many of the kids that we are talking about here have wheelchairs, and many of them attend specialized programs specifically at the Doris Crossson Center. We have actually three lift buses. One is in need of replacement. Unfortunately, we could not find a used bus to buy, and so we can, with the funds we allocated from the Pilt, we're able to buy one lift bus for a hundred-and-eighty-five thousand, eight-hundred-and-fifty dollars.
Nope, no used one, right?
No, the lift bus is also required to be air-conditioned as well.
Yeah, I just, it, it astounds me of how much that, that is. We bought our last lift bus two years ago, maybe three years ago, and it was one forty-four, I think. I wish I could say, you know, it comes with different numbers. And those, for people in the audience or those listening at home, we purchase all of our buses with Pilt money. Every bus we purchased in the last ten years has been Pilt money, has not come out of the general fund, which most districts cannot do. So I do appreciate the fact that we have it. I just wish we could make those dollars stretch a little bit further to replace some of our regular buses that are on the roads as well.
Rob, how many years ago did we look at contracting with Dean directly, and we felt, felt there was just very little savings there? Would we also cannibalize our fleet?
I, I, I'm just going to estimate a little bit. I think it was eight years ago we went out and asked Dean Transportation to give us a bid, and we actually could do it cheaper than them at that, at that point. And the other issue is if you go outside, then you basically sell off your fleet, and then you really can't go backwards and buy it back. So holding on to the fleet as long as possible is important. I do want to potentially look at leasing buses at some point to see how that goes, but it's very similar. Once you start leasing, it's like your lease payment is there every year. So you can't have a year where you say, we just don't have enough money. We can't purchase anything. You have the payment every year, whatever it happens to be. Right now, we're trying to stay with owning our own buses. Hopefully, we can continue to do that into the future. You could, in a bond project, buy buses. I don't typically like doing that because they, you know, you amateurize it over, is that the right word? Over a thirty-year period, but they only last about seventeen years. So that doesn't, to me, make a lot of sense.
Keeps us in the driver's seat as far as that goes, so. No pun intended. All right, move on to comments from the audience. No? Oh. Come on up. All right. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Ashley King, and my address is thirty-seven thirty-two Watkins Road, Harper Creek, Michigan. And I have a kindergartner at Wilds Park, and next year, I'm also going to have a kindergartner at Wilds Park. We are supposed to be going to Lakeview, but we looked around, and Wilds is where we wanted to be. On Thursday, something happened at school, and I'm going to try not to cry, but I am really happy with Wilds Park. And I've heard that, that there's a lot of people who got very frustrated with the whole lockdown. You referred to it as something else, so.
Yes, secure mode, so the standard.
But I heard that there was a certain individual who came to the school who is very, very protective of all of the children there. And when he entered the building, he looked like a bear, ready to fight off any chi, anybody that was going to hurt a child. And then a scared child would walk past, and he'd be like, it's all right, everything's fine, go to your class. And then he would turn and then stand again like a bear, and I heard that that was you. And I just wanted to say thank you, because I heard that you got across town pretty darn fast. And that you were just a breath of fresh air, and that even grownups were feeling safer because you were there. And I'm going to say thank you to the police officer that was there. This is my concern. I have three little girls, and they're not exactly easy, especially in the morning time. And I usually get to school eight-forty-ish because my other daughter was to be in kindergarten, Calvin Christian this year. I got there eight-forty-eight, and as I drove up, there were a bunch of cars in front of me, and I thought, why aren't they going? Come on, it's never this slow. And then by the time I got up to the front door, or the, the side door, excuse me, it was already closed. So I went around to the half circle, and I opened up my door, and I said, sweetie, go on inside. And she was going to walk me up. And I said, I'll have to get her out of her seat, and your sister out of her seat. It's okay, there's a lady right there, and she was very calm. And she said, come on, we got to hurry, get inside. Come on, class is starting. Let's go, let's go. I was in shock when I got home and I heard the call that there had been a little thing at school. But here was my question. When I talked to a few people I'm very comfortable with at the school, they said, well, it was a really weird time of day, so it was hard to tell the parents. Okay, but, and, and I, and I totally understand that, and they're absolutely right. However, anytime something like a terrible situation happens, it's not going to be at a convenient time. And I said, as a parent, all I thought was, if I had known on the way there, we're pulling in the drive, that something was going on, I would have just calmly turned and kept going, gone to Grandma's house, who lives right around the corner, and waited a little while. And then as soon as I got the all-clear, then we can come back. And so I talked to several different people, and they said, well, there's an announcement outside. We have like a lockdown, lockdown, and it goes off every ten minutes. And I said, you open the doors at eight-forty and you close them at eight-fifty, so if I get there eight-forty-one to eight-forty-nine, I have no idea what's going on. And so I've been racking my brain. I don't want to be part of the problem. I want to be part of the solution. Because I think with all of the things that you guys have in place, they were all executed properly. I would like to see more things in place, and let's come up with crazy scenarios, because when something crazy happens, it's always way crazier than what you anticipated. It's better to be overly prepared in one of those situations. And I was like, why can't we have, like, where she pointed at the speaker at the corner of the building, I said, why couldn't we have like a light, like a, like one of those?
Strobe light?
Yeah, but have it be green or yellow or red. That way, when a parent drives up, okay, today's a great school day. It's green. All right, it's a, it's a soft lockdown. It's just maybe somebody sprained an ankle. We're keeping that entrance open, you know, for somebody to get in an ambulance. And then there's a red one, where, you know what, Mom and Dad, just keep on rolling. We'll call you when it's over. So that was my concern, is that I didn't know anything, and had there have been a problem, I just let my child go right in there, and I had no idea what was going on. Now, some of this is because she's my oldest, and I'm new at all this, but I wanted to say first off, thank you for protecting my babies. And the irony is, right when the call was happening, that was when we were in the car doing our morning prayer to keep every teacher and every student safe at all of the schools in all the world, because kids deserve a safe place to learn, and teachers deserve a safe place to teach. So I just wanted to say thank you for doing a great job, and I want to help make it even easier to do a great job. So if there's anything I can do to help, please let me know.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
The board generally doesn't comment to, but Mr. Ridgeway, did you want to offer anything?
You heard what I had to say, and that's wonderful.
We, we did talk about it today at our safety meeting, honestly. The, the red, green, yellow, red idea came up. We, we, we don't talk about details because we don't want people who are doing bad stuff to know what we're thinking. But we went through, basically, we went back through the entire scenario. What would we do better differently? And so we, we learned from all of these things. You know, that was like a different time. It hasn't happened before, but like you said, we try to outthink everything, so thank you.
Very well.
I appreciate the.
Just so you're here, we do have a safety committee that meets every month. I think Mr. Ridgeway said that.
She didn't know anything. She, she invited me to a couple of things, but I've got kids in different school systems.
So ten and a half years, we've been looking at this diligently, and there's quite a few members in this room right here, and it's one of my passions, and it's one, something that I believe is even before education itself, keeping kids safe. So we've done a lot, and if you were to look at our, what we've done in relation to other districts, we are quite a ways ahead, so.
That's why I wanted to start off with, you guys did a great job, and I really appreciate it, and I stop thinking. That's why I wanted to start off with, you guys did a great job, and I really appreciate it, and I stop thinking those people protected my people on this day.
Thank you.
So thank you very much.
All right, appreciate your comments. Move on to action, biennial, biennial C I S D Board of Educational Election.
This is a long one. Chair calls for a motion to pass the following resolution. Resolution of the Harper Creek Board of Education, whereas the biennial election of the Board of the Calhoun Intermediate School District will be held Monday, June second, twenty twenty-five, at a meeting of representatives of the constituent or school boards. Whereas section six fourteen-two of the revised school code requires the constituent school board to designate its representative and identify the intermediate school board candidate the board supports for each position to be filled on the board by a resolution adopted not earlier than twenty-one days prior to the date of the election. May twelfth, twenty twenty-five is the earliest date that a school board may designate, designate its representative and identify the candidate that the board supports. And whereas section six fourteen-two prescribes the method of, for passage of a resolution, including the requirement of considering the resolution at not less than one public meeting before adopting the resolution, and whereas the board previously considered the resolution at an open meeting conducted in a manner prescribed under the Open Meetings Act on May twelfth, twenty twenty-five. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the board designate Shay Waterson as its representative to serve on the June second, twenty twenty-five electoral body responsible for electing members to the Calhoun Intermediate School District Board of Education in Barry Smith as alternate representative in the event the designated representative is unable to attend. The board directs its representative Waterson to vote for candidates Kenneth Pons and Gene Goodrich for a term of six years at least on the first ballot taken at June, at the June second, twenty twenty-five election. The board authorizes and directs its secretary to file this resolution with the Secretary of the Calhoun Intermediate School District.
Been moved and supported, do we have discussion? Hearing and seeing none, please call the roll.
Helverson?
Yes.
Mrs. Reisner?
Yes.
Mrs. Waterson is absent, Mrs. Alward, I vote yes, Mrs. Wallace?
Yes.
Mr. Smith is absent, and Mr. Bass?
I'm going to abstain.
Motion passes, four zero.
Four zero, all right. Move on to action, item B, new hires.
Chair calls for a motion, the Harper Creek Board of Education approved the following new hires. Lori Cathcart, did I say that right? Beetle Lake Elementary Developmental Kindergarten, masters, masters from University of Dayton, MA twenty, as discussed and reviewed.
Still moved.
Support.
It's been moved and it's supported, do we have discussion? Hearing and seeing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Helverson?
Yes.
Mrs. Reisner?
Yes.
Mrs. Wallace?
Yes.
Mrs. Alward, I vote yes, Mr. Bass?
I vote yes.
Motion passes, five zero.
All right, thank you for that. Action, item C, course books.
Chair calls for a motion, the Harper Creek Board of Education approved the following Harper Creek course books. High school, middle school, elementary, and mendum for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year, as discussed and reviewed.
Still moved.
Support.
All right, it's been moved and supported, do we have discussion? Hearing and seeing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Helverson?
Yes.
Mrs. Reisner?
Yes.
Mrs. Wallace?
Yes.
Mrs. Alward, I vote yes, Mr. Bass?
I vote yes.
Motion passes, five zero.
All right, thank you for that. Move on to action, item D, food service contract.
Chair calls for a motion, the Harper Creek Board of Education approved the annual food service contract renewal with Chart Wells, as discussed and reviewed.
Some. Support.
Been moved and supported, do we have discussion? Hearing and seeing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Helverson?
Yes.
Mrs. Reisner?
Yes.
Mrs. Wallace?
Yes.
Mrs. Alward, I vote yes, Mr. Bass?
I vote yes.
Motion passes, five zero.
Thank you. Move on to item E, weight room project.
Chair calls for a motion, the Harper Creek Board of Education approved the low bidder for the weight room flooring, Sornex, at seventy-one thousand, three hundred and seventy-eight dollars and sixteen cents, and the purchase of weight equipment from Direct Fitness Solutions for seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred and sixty-five dollars and forty-five cents.
Still moved.
Support.
It's been moved and supported, do we have discussion? Hearing and seeing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Helverson?
Yes.
Mrs. Reisner?
Yes.
Mrs. Wallace?
Yes.
Mrs. Alward, I vote yes, Mr. Bass?
I vote yes.
Motion carries, five zero.
All right, action, item F, student device purchase.
Chair calls for a motion, the Harper Creek Board of Education approved the technology purchases as presented by Technology Director Jim Maynard, using Pilt funds for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year.
Still moved?
Support.
It's been moved and supported, do we have discussion? Hearing and seeing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Helverson?
Yes.
Mrs. Reisner?
Yes.
Mrs. Wallace?
Yes.
Mrs. Alward, I vote yes, Mr. Bass?
I vote yes.
Motion carries, five zero.
Thank you for that. Action, item G, naming of facilities.
Chair calls for a motion, the Harper Creek Board of Education approved the recommendation by the naming committee to name the service drive Matt Byrne Way, as discussed and reviewed.
Still moved.
Support.
It's been moved and supported, do we have discussion? Hearing and seeing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Helverson?
Yes.
Mrs. Reisner?
Yes.
Mrs. Wallace?
Yes.
Mrs. Alward, I vote yes, Mr. Bass?
I vote yes.
Motion carries, five zero.
All right, action, item H, bus purchase.
Chair calls for a motion, the Harper Creek Board of Education authorizes the purchase of a lift bus for Midwest Transport at a cost of one hundred and eighty-five thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars.
Still moved.
Support.
Been moved and supported, do we have discussion? Hearing and seeing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Helverson?
Yes.
Mrs. Reisner?
Yes.
Mrs. Wallace?
Yes.
Mrs. Alward, I vote yes, Mr. Bass?
I vote yes.
Motion carries, five zero.
All right, we are going to need a motion to go into closed session before you read that. Do we want to hold our student board reps over till the end? If not, I would like, is this our last meeting, correct? Arabella's last meeting? So, thank you, congratulations, well, to all three of you guys for being on the, on the board, but we expect great things out of you guys, and just so you know, the, the board is looking at your information. We're gonna try to reformat how we fit you guys into things as we move forward. But thank you very much for your service to the board, and with that, I will, unless you have to, wanna say anything, Mr. Ridgeway?
I think I'm good.
All right, please read the motion to go into closed session.
Chair calls for a motion, the Harper Creek Board of Education meet in closed session under section eight C of the Open Meetings Act for Strategy Connected with Collective Bargaining.
Still moved.
Support.
It's been moved and supported, do we have discussion?
I don't, do not anticipate any action coming out of closed session, just for informational purposes.
Okay, please call the roll.
Mr. Helverson?
Yes.
Mrs. Reisner?
Yes.
Mrs. Wallace?
Yes.
Mrs. Alward, I vote yes, Mr. Bass?
I vote yes.
Motion carries, five zero.
All right, we are now in closed session. Do we wanna ask the audience to go, or do we wanna move?